Can we get the Cub Scouts to lead the pledges of allegiance?
The flag of the United States of America, into a republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, immeasurable, liberating, and justice for all.
Good job.
We've got some minutes in the regular and executive session of May 25, 2016.
You know, Mr. Vice Chair, could I suggest that we take the joint meeting before we even do the minutes with the Finance Committee?
Sure. We have a joint meeting with the Finance Committee to vote on appreciation transfers requests.
And, yeah, so what I'd like to ask is, so we had an issue regarding the closing of the books as it relates to a debt service item, so I was going to ask our Treasurer, Paul DiGirolamo, to just sort of comment on the issue and the problem, and then I was going to ask Beth Mosley, Town Accountant, to kind of go over, you know, what we've gone through over the past week with DOR and what we've been able to navigate for a solution, so.
We have to take a vote on the joint meeting, don't we?
To open?
To open the joint meeting.
It's, you can, no harm in doing it.
Make a motion that we take a vote to open the joint meeting with the Finance Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Others in favor? Finance Committee?
So if, Paul, if you wouldn't mind.
We have a refinancing thing in the issue for 415. At that time, my budgets had already been submitted to FinCom for the year, you know, for the upcoming fiscal year 16. In there, I had already, I had had the refinancing piece but did not have the new bond issue, which was a water piece, actually, two separate water pieces. So therefore, nothing was appropriated for when, or the payments when they came due on 615 of 16, therefore creating what we now have as the deficits in the, what will become in the water account. Unfortunately, it's too bad, I did remember in December when we did the recap to pick up the bond piece for the school, but had not picked, had not reviewed and picked up this additional note, the additional bond payment that had come down due to this, due to the new issue of, as I said, the water. So, and what you're going to see here for most of these transfers is also, is just an allocation between, we've over allocated, or we over, we have over, not posted, but the breakdown between interest and principal were in different accounts. So we're moving the overages from one account against the under, you know, the under shotfalls in the other account. And that's the, just about, most of the, most of the requests for transfers. Do you want to go over the transfers now while I'm standing here?
I'd let Beth.
Yeah, we're going to let Beth talk first.
Okay.
So over the past few weeks, once we realized that this was going to be an issue, we called the state almost immediately to talk to the DOR, just get an idea of what our options are, be very transparent with them as far as what happened, what we're thinking, how we're going to handle it, et cetera. There was some confusion on their end as to which fund this debt and the premium related to the debt actually belonged to. They kind of wanted us to put it to the general fund because there was a misunderstanding that the premium had some general long-term bond obligations. As of this very recent Monday, they came in and told us, no, it's water debt, which is what we thought. It's great news for us because that means the entire deficit of the payment that was not budgeted moved over to the Water Enterprise Fund. There was a premium related to this that we get to take in as revenue because it was non-exempt, so it's $444,000, which also got into the Water Enterprise. So their suggestion on how we handle this going forward, because it is still an illegal deficit, is to let it drop to retained earnings. Once they certify the retained earnings for Water Enterprise at the special town meeting in the fall, vote to appropriate the deficit from the retained earnings of water. They said it would be the cleanest way, we won't have to raise it on the recap. It's the best way to move forward. So, the overall deficit just for that debt appropriation in Water Enterprise is 622,000, roughly. We're asking FinCom tonight to do a transfer of $50,000 in the Water Enterprise Reserve that's available to bring that deficit down to 572,000. And then that will be what will have to be voted in the fall from retained earnings water to fund it and move forward. One thing that did come up from DOR, too, that I'd like to mention is they recommend highly that we look into water and sewer rates to try to raise them, and Tim and I were talking about it earlier. The last time that actually happened was December of 2014, so we are definitely due. Sometime in August, I think we're going to sit down and talk about it, and then hopefully present something to you in the fall. Any questions?
Yeah, so the deficit that we have to monitor retained earnings is 572, or is it 572 minus the premium?
So, it's 572, but the premium's going to help significantly because we had certified retained earnings for FY15 in water of 919,000, and we've only used 140,000 of that. So that's still there, it's going to fall down to retained earnings to our free cash essentially in the water fund, and that 444,000 will kind of offset a little bit what happened.
So can we anticipate that our retained earnings would be getting influx of the 444,000?
Eventually, yes, but this year, the way, DOR doesn't take kindly to illegal deficits, as they refer to it. So they hit you with a penalty, which just means at the end of the year, our fund balance is whatever number it ends up being, and then we have to subtract out the 571,000. So our, that net number is going to be hit by the deficit, but within that number still is the 444,000 that we got for the premium, which is going to significantly help. So I do feel confident that we're going to have enough certified in FY16 to cover this in the fall. If we don't, we would have to raise it, but I don't think it's going to come to that.
With that, then, is it like a one-year hit? Because 440 is a waste, and it becomes clearly.
Correct. It's always going to be there. Tim was just, yeah.
Exactly right.
Yes.
You actually close out with retained earnings in FY18.
They restrict you for a year.
Right.
Essentially what they do.
Kind of.
The money's still there. They just basically say, yeah, you got it, but you can't use it.
It's a sort of punishment.
And we think we'll have retained earnings anyway to carry us through.
I have seen nothing to lead me to believe we will not have enough.
And the town council tells us free cash retained earnings until the certified, I would say.
Right, no, I know, yeah. All right.
So there's, so there's a couple of requests for transfers here. So there's a difference, just so everybody understands, is the request for transfers that we vote on every year, and there's four of them here, and they all are in the general fund, and it relates to what Paul had talked about, about just moving the money around within, essentially within debt service. And those require votes by both the Board of Selectment and the Finance Committee. So I guess my recommendation is we take these up first, and then after that, then the Finance Committee has a vote on their own for the request to take $50,000 from the water reserve and put it to the water debt service. I just want to make sure everybody understands.
Explain why it's in the water reserve. Tell us the why. It's exclusive to the.
Well, the borrowing relates to the replacement of water lines.
Okay.
Yeah, so, but what, I guess, and Paul, correct me if I'm wrong, but what made it a little complicated to DOR is we took a number of different debts and combined them in one debt service, which they encourage you to do because then you're not paying multiple costs associated with the debt. So in this case, initially, when they saw it, they said, well, no, this is general fund, and we were saying, no, it's water, and it kind of went back and forth, and it finally settled that, yeah, we had the general fund piece, okay, it was the water fund piece that wasn't. So essentially, we're paying for something in 16 that's a real cost, and we're paying, paying, and that's what, that's what this is all about, paying for that.
Request is hereby made for the following transfer in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 33B of the Massachusetts General Law. Amount requested $69,033 to be transferred, Department Account Number 017515917, to be transferred to Account Number 017105912, and the present balance is set of $69,033.
Second.
All those in favor?
Now, Kevin, Chairman Costin, do you want to, how do you want to handle this? You want to just echo, echo it?
So Finance Committee say motion. Is there a motion? Second. The motion, two seconds. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Thank you.
Second transfer is requested hereby made of the following transfer in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 33B of the Massachusetts General Law. Amount requested $6,203.26 to be transferred from Account 017515917, to be transferred to Account Number 017515918. Present balance and set appropriation is $7,299.72.
Second.
All those in favor?
Second. More discussion? All those in favor? Please.
The third transfer is requested hereby made for the following transfer in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 33B of the Massachusetts General Law. Amount requested $1,097 to be transferred from Account 017525925, of $636.20. Account Number 019145173019, of $460.80, to be transferred to Account Number 017515918. The present balance of set appropriation is $1,096.46 after request number two.
Second.
All those in favor?
Second. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Please.
Finance Committee, where's the last transfer?
Yeah, this is the fourth one.
It's after the numbers page.
Oh, okay. I didn't see that. All right. Request is hereby made for the following transfer in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 33B of the Massachusetts General Law. Amount requested is $38.62 to be transferred from Department 019145173019, Employee Health Insurance, to be transferred to 019165172-019, Employee Dental Insurance, and the present balance and set appropriation is negative $38.62.
Second.
All those in favor?
Mr. Chair, if I could, what motion we have? The reserve fund transfer, $50,000, be transferred to Water Debt Principal, account 287105912, be transferred to the Water Enterprise Reserve Fund. So, zero seconds. Any more discussion? All those in favor of that? Zero. Thank you.
So you could have a motion to adjourn the.
Yeah, make a motion to adjourn the joint meeting with the Finance Committee.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Thanks, thanks Finance Committee.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. All right, we're going to move down the list to, we're going to have the Cub Scouts to present the Police Chief, Fire Chief, Communications Manager, and Daniel Ali with appreciation of the Pinewood Derby Cars donation to the program. Could I have Dan Toy come up, please?
Hello, everybody. How are we, Jake?
Good, how are you?
Good, thank you. So, we got PAC 56, we've been in Holbrook for over 50 years now, and one of the events we run every year is called the Pinewood Derby. This is where the kids, with the help of their parents, make a car of a small piece of pine block to race. Following the rules, they design, cut, sand, paint, and assemble the wheels. We've been using the track that we had since the beginning. It was old, not very straight, two lanes we couldn't use anymore. The new track is about $1,200. So with the support from local businesses, individuals, we would like to present these, some of these people with the cars that they actually, we had to race down the track and then hung them up for them. I'd like to first thank a few people that we already gave some cars out to. Maria's Pizza, Napa Auto Pots, Pro Bill Transmissions, Steve's Oil, Revitalized Oil, Reliable Transmissions, Len Olson, Mark Horne, Mike Horne, and then the next Columbus, the American Legion. Now, we also have made a couple cars. We would like to first ask somebody from the fires department, if somebody's here, we'd like to present them their car. All right. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Have a good one, Jeff. We hope you hang up someplace so people can see you, okay?
Yeah.
Take a picture with me? No. Next, can we call somebody from the police department?
It is.
Would you like to say thank you to yous?
Great job, guys.
All right, and then we also have one for Danny Lee, if he could come forward and let us give him one. I would like to personally thank Mr. John Cotton for helping us get this done, and D. Joe O'Carroll, who couldn't be here today, who helped us make these cars. Like I said, all these cars did race on the track for the first time. I can't tell you who won, but we all won, the latter counts.
We have the communication.
So again, the dispatchers also helped us out, we'd like to give them a car.
Hi, guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you for helping us out.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
When he puts his lights on, he is.
All right, so scouting is doing good in Holbrook. We're always looking for more kids, so if anybody knows kids that are looking to join Scouts, we're all here for them. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. May 25, 2016.
I make a motion that we accept the minutes of the regular session of Wednesday, May 25, 2016.
Second.
All in favor? Two upset, one abstention.
One abstention.
One abstention, so. We have a motion for the minutes of the executive session of Wednesday, May 25, 2016.
I make a motion that we accept the minutes of the executive session of Wednesday, May 25, 2016.
Second.
All in favor? One abstention. Can we have the Town Administrator's report?
Yeah, just a few things to report on. I'm going to leave a lot of it to the department heads. There is a notice that we received on the family concert nights over at the Town Gazebo, and the next one is July 24, and playing will be Patrick DeStoop and Sons, all your favorite 50s and 60s music. So July 24 at 6:00 p.m. at the gazebo, and then again on August 7, 6:00 p.m., and then on August 21, Calum O'Brien, talented Irish musician, sings Irish lore and songs, and Calum's actually a Holbrook resident, so. So we encourage people to attend those events. We had a, you know, town meeting voted to support our efforts to address some properties that are essentially blight, and we started that process. We had a four hours, almost a four-hour session with our tax title attorneys, Dean Brogio and Brown. That was, I think, on the 29th of June, and they kind of put together a roadmap for us, a process for us to follow. So right now, we're working on putting a policy together for that. We will, I will bring that to the Board of Selectment to vote on, and the Inspection Services Division is identifying a handful of properties to start with. So more to follow on that. I think it's an important program. I think it'll be out there on the webpage, so if there are properties that residents would like to report, we'll have a venue for them to do that. And as was voted at town meeting, what really gives the program teeth is the ability to take the violations that the Inspection Services Division writes up and to lean them to the property tax bill, which has really given the program teeth. Other towns have seen a lot of improvement based on that, so that's kind of front and center, and we're working hard to put that together. I know Beth, our Town Accountant, will talk about, you know, the closing and all that we've got going on accounting-wise, and that's all, that's all I have for my report, barring any questions.
Board?
No.
Thank you. Do we have any citizens' concerns out there? Any old business anybody wants to talk about? All right, we'll move into new business. We have a hearing, 7:15, a hearing on the application to transfer the all-alcohol restaurant license from 73-77 Union Street, Inc., DBA, Union Street Pub, Cynthia Nordstrom, manager to skewers Steakhouse, Inc., DBA, skewer steakhouse and breakfast, Roy Braz de Mazio, manager at 73-77 Union Street. Consider request for approval of pledge of the alcohol license to Steve Faber. Consider application for a common vicula license in the name of skewer steakhouse, Inc., DBA, skewer steakhouse and breakfast.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Anybody here to speak on that?
I'm Attorney Ethan Schaff. Please let me. I'm Attorney Ethan Schaff. How are you this evening? This is a transfer of what was the Union Pub. It is now a struggling business and doesn't have much of a operation, if you will. My client, Roy, and he's happy to answer your questions, has a good idea for the place. He wants to make it into a sort of a Brazilian skewers place, which serves meat, which, you know, serves good dinners, which you're probably all familiar to, with. Two things need to happen. Obviously, the business has to transfer, but there's an all-alcoholic license there that has to be transferred as well, which is why I've taken this through the ABCC. Because the business is struggling and there's not much there, it's a low purchase price, it's 47.5, which is indicated on my application to you, which will eventually end up at the $25,000 has been put down, and the rest will be paid after closing. My client, though he's not ready to do it yet, is also interested in purchasing the real estate. So for the time being, there'll be a landlord-tenant relationship between the current owner, Mr. Faber, who's in that, and my client. However, he's going to get an option to buy the real estate, excuse me, down the road. Therefore, that option to buy is going to be secured by a pledge of the license. So I've made two applications to you and the ABCC, a straight transfer, the all-alcoholic license, as well as a pledge back to the seller to secure the obligation to purchase the real estate, because ultimately, what he wants to do is gain control of the site. And these days, if you do this kind of work, which I do, the business isn't worth a whole lot unless you own the dirt. That's what they say, and that's what's true. You've got to own the dirt. So his goal is to own both of these things. When I spoke with Marjorie Godfrey, she said to me, why don't you also make an application, and we'll do it simultaneous, to transfer the common vic? It's not really a transfer, but obviously, you need a common vic to sell food. So there's three applications in front of you, gentlemen, tonight. There's the license transfer, there's the petition to pledge the license, and there's the common vic. As I said, it's a pretty forward, straight deal. Marjorie requested that I have my clients meet with various town officials. They've done that. I've gotten feedback, I want to say from Arthur Boyle, and he asked me to change the application, which I did. There was some confusion about who would handle which improvements, but we've reflected on the application, that my client will be building out the kitchen with his funds. I've included bank statements to show he has the money to build out the kitchen. And he's excited to open up for business. It'll take a little bit, but not a lot, and he's going to move ahead swiftly, and I'm happy at this time to answer any of your questions, and if you don't have any questions from me, my client can also answer your questions. I've done this once before.
Can you just explain the pledge of the license again?
So, the lease, I have, because Mr. Faber will be the landlord, I did a lease between Mr. Faber and Mr. Braz. De Mazio, I was close. Anyway, the last paragraph of that lease, because I was very careful, grants, because he doesn't want to be a tenant, he really wants to gain control of the property, gives him an option to purchase, but it really is more than an option, it's almost an obligation to purchase, because Mr. Faber ultimately wants to get out of it. So, there's a continuing relationship with these parties, because even though it'll start off as a lease and last for about seven months, if you were to look at paragraph 26 of the lease, there's an option to purchase, but almost an obligation to purchase. Well, again, Mr. Faber is selling the business for not really what he could get, but he wants out. It's a low price. Even the real estate is at a low price. So, in order to keep everything together and give him the kind of deal that he wants, because he's going to have sweat equity as well as his own funds going in, to secure all that, we're asking for a pledge of the license, because that gives Mr. Faber a certain amount of confidence and collateral, knowing it'll happen. And quite frankly, the ABCC is used to seeing this. Now, usually, it's the seller taking back funds when there's a pledge, but in this case, it's not taking back funds, because he's going to get all the money, but he will be getting more money, so it's to secure the second transaction, if you will.
But also beneficial for this gentleman, because he would be prohibited to stop if he didn't have that.
Correct.
With that, he can't.
Correct.
Correct, correct. Absolutely. Well, on the pledge far. Well, here's the thing. I think what'll happen is, is the pledge will go away rather quickly, because in seven months, that's our goal, he will own the real estate. So he'll have the real estate, and you can't, at that point, there. So he'll have the real estate, and you can't, at, at that point, um, there, there...
Is, 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 remind you, the real estate is being financed, correct?
Right. So, when he pays it off, because what, what, was it a four-year note? Four-year note?
It was three.
He took, he's taking back a three-year note.
How long was the option for?
Well, the option's gonna be executed in seven months. However, he's...
So, there's a saying there that the option is for seven months?
Yes. Yeah. Because the lease, right on the lease, it says that it's only a seven-month lease. So it's a very quick lease. Then, he'll own the business for cash, but the seller's gonna take back paper. He'll continue to obviously have the pledge, because he'll get a mortgage when he sells the real estate, plus he'll have a pledge, that'll secure him nicely. And, is it 265,000 around there?
Yes.
Around 265,000. So he's gonna be into the real estate for money. So he's gonna put down a deposit. However, 265 is going back in paper. Therefore, you've got a pledge to secure the real estate loan, plus he'll take back a mortgage. And then, the good news is, is he'll be out of it if, I don't know if that's a concern of yours, but Mr. Faber will be out of it, because there are, the way the note's gonna be drafted, Mr. uh, Demazio will be encouraged to either pay it off or to refinance it. At which point, Mr. Faber will...
Be paid in full. Three years.
Three, three years.
Three years. So it's meant to move swiftly, to get the place up and running, to make it better than it was. You've got two people involved, you've got the seller who's gonna stay involved, and you've got a new buyer with cash, and we've supplied those bank statements to show he has the money to renovate.
The manager decided he didn't want to execute that privilege. He hasn't done, he's held the property.
Correct. And Mr. Demazio wouldn't want that. I, every client I have, I tell the same thing. If you don't own the dirt, you got nothing. Because if you got a nasty landlord, now, he's not nasty, but let's say he was. You got a nasty landlord, and he says, "No, I'm not gonna let you assign this lease." What can you sell? Nothing. So, I've told my client that he's best off owning the real estate.
Questions for the board?
No.
Just, just one, one thing, if I may ask. Have, have you already been working with the, the building department in terms of building permits and... Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I think someone would like to speak.
I have some questions. I live right next door, and, oh, basically, in the area. Um, what do you think of your hours of operation for the facility? Are they gonna be the same here or one or...
Uh, I wanna be open by six or seven o'clock in the morning.
Yeah.
Until nine, 10 o'clock at night.
Okay. And the other question I have is, do you have a jukebox?
Do you have a jukebox there?
Do you have a jukebox?
Huh? Coincidentally, I have three in my basement, because my father, a World War II veteran, once told me that what was is better than what will be. So I'll probably get that jukebox, you don't have to worry about that. So I'll have a fourth jukebox, if, if I have anything to do with that.
Are you gonna do anything with the fence?
Fence and parking lot, the whole outside.
The whole outside, fence, in between your building on the side and my little hill there, that has been cleaned out for a long time.
Well, that's, uh, my next step is gonna be meet with you, so again, my idea is to build a retaining wall, put the fence on top, and get rid of the trees.
On the side, on the side of the building, the building is?
Yes. Because they are pretty much on the top roof.
Yeah, well, this, uh, the line there is kind of crazy.
Oh, I know. But I was gonna, actually, I talked to Steve, and, uh, we're gonna set a, you know, time to meet you, so we can talk about it.
All right. Very good. All right, it sounds good.
And just to let you all know, he's tip-certified. I mean, he got tip-certified, he's taking it seriously.
What are the hours gonna be? 'Cause here in the application for the vicula license, it's 6:00 AM to 1:00 AM. What are the hours actually going to be?
You had told me 6:00 AM to 1:00 AM. Does that sound right, or is that what was there, Steve?
Well, I don't believe, I'll 6:00, I think I'm 10:30 or something.
One o'clock and, uh, you saying...
Yes.
So I just wanna know what you're saying, 10?
I think you were thinking of serving breakfast, right?
Yes.
No, not so much where he said 10:00 PM. Now, here on the application, it says 1:00 AM.
I think it is 1:00 AM. Because the existing hour is 1:00 AM. I asked him, he may have misspoken, but it's 1:00 AM.
Fine, okay.
Because it's 1:00 AM currently here. And the reason he wants to go earlier is he wants to try to do all three meals. Correct?
Anybody else wanna speak on this? Here's a public hearing.
I have one more question. You, you commented on what you're doing, uh, on the outside, which is interesting. I'm just wondering, what else do you have planned in terms of renovations for the inside?
Well, I wanna be, uh, open concept type of thing. I gotta keep the kitchen the way it is, I just gotta open the wall a little bit, so I can have, have a view, put up to the left. Also, about the, uh, way you have the roof now.
And the equipment's okay? The current equipment, or...
Uh, we gotta, I gotta go to, you know, see what we're speaking of.
And structurally, the building's fine, and the...
The facilities, the electrical and plumbing, seems to be...
And that's why we've staggered it the way we have. We will work to get it where it needs to be.
I know one guy in some of the rooms to deal with, especially with the water, some of the plumbing, sewer pipes, not properly. There might have been, before I owned it, right now, under the sewer system, when I bought that, excuse me, I'm sorry, I should stand. When I bought that, I put in plumbing, plumbing, the pipe, the sewer pipe was already there. But I put in, uh, plumbing, new electrical, valve, circuit breakers. And that building also, I understand, on the, I was hoping it was well-built, it's iron, steel beams through the floors and stuff like that. I mean, it's in my shape now, we got the lease renovation, but it's a pretty solid building. And we had a great meeting with him and out that day, we discussed today, and we're getting a floor play together, you know, trying to work with it, so I wanna see it naked. And, uh, obviously, the roofs, everyone in the mall. And, uh, he's got some great, some great ideas, and, uh, and he's in the construction business himself, it's definitely not opening up the way it is.
That's great. It's exciting.
I have a question. Do you have any kind of goal for opening?
Um, we will host it. I don't know, it's, it's all the things on my schedule to do beside, which, I gotta do bathrooms, you know, I gotta do, uh, handicap, accessible bathrooms, I gotta do rent outside. I wanna say it's gonna take me about two months or so. Follow me to a...
Anything else from the board?
No.
Anything else from anybody?
No.
All right, first, we'll look for a motion to, uh, transfer the all-alcohol license from 73-77 Union Street, Inc., DBA, Union Street Pub, to skewer Steakhouse, Inc., DBA, skewer Steakhouse and Breakfast. Roy Braz Demazio, manager, and the pledge of the alcohol license to Steve Faber, and send the application to the ABCC for consideration.
So move. Second.
One abstention. And then, I think we're looking for, uh, another motion to grant the request for a common vic license for skewer Steakhouse, Inc., DBA, skewer Steakhouse and Breakfast.
So move. Second.
All those in favor?
You need, yeah, all right, I'll get it.
Need a motion for the pledge of...
Margie will get the minutes.
And we'll have a third motion for the, uh, the pledge of the license.
So move. Second.
In favor?
Close the hearing?
Make a motion that we close, uh, the hearing for the application for the, uh, transfer of all-alcohol license for 73-77 Union Street, DBA, Union Street Pub, to skewer Steakhouse, Inc.
So move. Second.
All those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you very much. I will work with Margie to get it all done right, and I've also been in touch with everybody else, and I'll continue to work. Thank you.
Good luck. Good luck with you.
All right, next, we'll mo, uh, vote to hire an applicant for the position of Assistant Wire Inspector and appoint the individual as Assistant Wire Inspector with a term to expire on June 30th, 2017. We have two applicants.
So, so, yeah, Mr. Vice Chair, you have, uh, two, two applications. You have one for Gerald Graham, and you have another one for Donald Young. And I know, uh, Mr. Graham's here, uh, and Mr. Young is here, as is our wiring inspector, Al...
Sure. I'm Al Lawson, Hallmark Wiring Inspector. I'm recommending that Donald Young be the assistant. He has been for the last, since I've been in office, and when George Davy was in office. He's always been there when I need him, when the town needs him. He's helped me out many a times, when I was not even able to get here, or I was on vacation. When the town hall went down, I wasn't able to get here, but he got here before me, figured out the problem, um, called every supply house in the state, looking for this breaker for this place. And then, he finally found it. He had to leave at five, three, five o'clock in the morning to go to the western part of the state, to be there when it, when the place opened, and he came back and put it in. I mean, and he kept me notified the entire time. So, we've always worked well together, and I would recommend him, you know, be the assistant.
Problem is, this position hasn't been filled since 2008.
You guys, we've been paying him.
I, yeah, I see, I found, I seen that, but he hasn't been appointed by the Board of Selectmen since 2000.
Is that an oversight from when he was originally, uh, appointed?
It should be on a yearly basis.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a, it's a bit unclear. We identified that this position existed, it was on the wage and salary schedule, um, but when we went back and looked at, uh, the actual appointment of an Assistant Wiring Inspector, it went back to 2008 or 2009, it had not been, it, we, the Board of Selectmen has not voted on an Assistant Wiring Inspector in that amount of time. Not sure why.
He was, um, he was appointed when I was appointed.
But you're appointed annually.
Right. But originally, 10 years ago.
Yeah.
Whenever it was. He was appointed at the same exact time, we're in the same exact room.
No, I understand that, but he hasn't been reappointed since 2008.
I have no idea why. It's just an overlook? You guys overlooked it, or is this something? 'Cause we've been paying him. He's been doing the job. I don't know what, if it was something that was just overlooked, or...
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't know. I, that even predates me, when, when I was a selectman, so I, I don't, nobody seems to know what happened back in 2008 or 2009, why this position sort of fell off the appointment schedule.
I have a question. I mean, I don't hear too much about the wire. Do you, do you have an office downstairs?
Yes. I don't get a lot of complaints. We don't get a lot of complaints. So that's why you're not hearing about them.
So when somebody calls for an electrical inspection, they call town, the Inspection Services?
Yes.
There you go? Okay.
Does the Board have any recommendations, or...
I would make a motion that, um, we appoint Mr. Gerald Graham, a Holbrook resident, and, um, his, uh, work experience is Commonwealth of the Mass, Board of State Examiners, Electricians, Town of Branchy Wire Inspector, Town of Randolph, Assistant Wire Inspector, um, Town of Dover, Town of Needham, MBTA. Um, he's a, he's a town resident, and I just think, um, you know, we should be looking to fill positions with, with town residents. That would be my motion.
I'll, I'll second that motion.
I've always said, when we came here, if we, if we have our town resident, we should be looking at who's qualified. And it looks like Jerry's well-qualified, that we should be taking care of our own, people in our own town before we go outside. And it seems that Jerry is more than qualified. And we should stick with the town resident.
Excuse me. Can I, do you mind if I talk?
No, go ahead.
Can I hear that list again?
What town?
Why he's qualified?
What, what is work experiences?
Yeah.
Commonwealth of the Mass, Board of State Examiners, Electricians.
Which he is now.
Wire Inspector, Board Member, Division of Professional License, December 2014 to present.
Right. And he's a...
Yep.
He's a Randolph Assistant Inspector?
Yep.
And what else does he do? I mean, I'm just wondering, that's...
No, that's it.
That's a lot of time.
That's it.
Board of Examiners...
Well, I think they probably meet on a monthly basis or something.
Right. And then he's the Randolph Assistant. That was just, you know, and he's a full-time electrical inspector.
Are you a full-time employee?
Yeah, for myself.
For yourself?
Right.
Okay.
Motion's been, motion's been made, and it's been seconded, so. All those in favor?
Thank you.
Vote to appoint Barbara Davis to the position of School Committee Member on the Permanent School Board Building Committee, per the School Committee recommendation, with a term to expire June 30th, 2019.
Yeah, that's just a, that's another appointment. That's, that's, the, the school committee voted, uh, to, um, sort of reappoint. I mean, the Board of Selectmen appoint, but they, they endorsed the reappointment of, uh, Barbara Davis.
Okay. I'll make a motion.
I make a motion that we, uh, where we go? Slaughter. No, I make a motion to appoint Barbara Davis to the position of the School Committee Member on the Permanent School Building Committee, per the School Committee's recommendation, with a term to expire June 30th, 2019.
Second.
All those in favor?
Mr. Chairman, real quick, do we now have to appoint Jerry before we get out of this meeting? Will we just hide him?
You just did, didn't you?
You did, by...
By doing that, we don't have to, by that vote?
That was a vote to, the, the motion, I believe, was to appoint.
Vote motion to appoint.
Okay, just wanna make sure. Since, since we haven't done it in a while, wanna make sure we got him right.
Mind this next year.
All right, next up is a vote to appoint two members to the Permanent Cable Television Advisory Committee.
Mr. Vice Chair, we have, uh, Mr. Keith O'Brien here, who's the Chair of the Permanent Cable Television Advisory Committee. He'd like to address the board.
Evening, fellas. Everybody, how are you? Um, just real quick, the Permanent Cable Television Advisory Committee, made up of five members, uh, we had two members resign, so we have two open spots. Um, you should also now have in front of you, um, three people have expressed an interest to the two available spots, if you have a copy. Uh, one was an email, and the other were actually two letters that I submitted to Marjorie last week. The people that submitted letters are Maggie Bradley, uh, Maggie Brady, BJ Foley, and Anthony Govan, Jr. I can try to answer any questions we got. I mean, I'm familiar with one, I'm not familiar with the other two, and I don't know if any...
Any of them here wanna speak?
Is there any, any of them? No.
So, so we have...
We have two opens. Three names for two positions. Three names. Board have any discussion?
Is there recommendations from the Cable Advisory Committee, or is it, um...
Both Maggie. Uh, Maggie spent some time up with HCam, um, her daughter, uh, before she graduated with the high school. She was putting in some time at the high school.
BJ, I see around here doing the...
Yeah, and BJ as well, uh, puts in a lot of time at HCam, both as a, uh, part-time employee, as well as volunteers, a lot of his time up there, uh, for different programs and, uh, work up there. Anthony is a new resident of the town. He is, all three are residents of the town. He's a new resident of the town, according to his email, uh, he just moved into the town about two years ago. Um, he must have saw the posting online and expressed an interest... He must have saw the posting online and expressed an interest a couple of days ago.
New resident.
I did see that, yes.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we appoint Maggie Brady to be appointed to fill the vacancy until June 30th, 2017, and BJ Foley to be appointed to fill the vacancy until June 30th, 2018. And then when the next one becomes available, maybe we can have him resubmit or...
Certainly keep his name.
Keep his name on file.
Close. You don't often get three people to volunteer for two spots.
Seems like we're having a problem. Seems like we're getting more volunteers, and we do have spots, which is a good thing.
Well, I am going to reach out to Anthony, because he's just an impressive, got a really impressive resume, and we're always, he may want to get involved in some other capacity on some other committee, so...
I don't know. I know BJ, but that's about, I don't know Maggie Brady, but the only reason that I made those motions, because both of them have been involved in the...
HCAM.
HCAM.
No, I understood, yeah.
Yeah, there's a motion on the floor.
Second.
All those in favor?
Thank you very much.
Next is to vote to accept a generous donation of $6,000 from the Copeland Family Foundation to be used for the animal shelter. It is a generous donation. They do that yearly.
Yeah, they do, and I actually had a conversation with Larisse today, just inquiring what she uses the funds for, because we do, I think, get this gift every year. And her response was, it gets used for a lot of needed things that demands that she has, you know, remodeling, new cages, supplies, anything for the shelter that are out of, that there's a need for, that's outside the scope of her general expenses. So, I trust that she puts it to good use. I'm sure she does.
Has anybody from the Copeland family ever come up to speak?
I don't recall ever.
We're, they're very generous. And they started out, maybe it was, it was $5,000 or something. They appreciate it, and thank you.
Yeah, I'll make sure that we send them a note.
Very generous, thank you. I want to make a motion that we accept a generous donation of $6,000 from the Copeland Family Foundation for the animal shelter.
So moved.
All those in favor? Next is the vote to authorize the Fire Chief to accept an award from the Department of Homeland Security on behalf of the Town of Holbrook by a department related to a 2015 Assistance to Firefighters grant, AFG application regarding self-contained breathing apparatus and cardiac compression device. Chief, if you want to speak?
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Assistance firefighter, firefighters' grant has been a long staple of the FEMA and the Department of Homeland Security. The town has been successful in the past with these grants, and again this year, fortunately, we were able to submit an application in January, which was ultimately successful. These are competitive grants. Historically, over the past few years, you need to receive a score of approximately 90 or better through the scoring process that FEMA and the Department of Homeland Security chooses to actually be awarded these grants. And so, our award this year, this year, our request was for self-contained breathing apparatus, or the air packs that you see the firefighters wearing when they enter burning buildings and go into hazardous environments, as well as cardiac compression devices, which are used for treatment of cardiac arrest patients. Our initial grant request was for $174,144 for the combined request. That was decreased slightly during the award process. $140,000 of that figure now will be available for the SCBA portion, and approximately $26,642 will be available for the cardiac compression device portion of that. This is a matching grant. It's approximately 5% matching grant, so the figures work out to a federally approved award of $156,802, and the Holbrook cost match would be $7,840. So, just briefly, I'd like to just also thank Congressman Lynch's office. They were very helpful during the grant process with helping to reach out to their contacts within Homeland Security and FEMA as well for assistance there, so that was a big benefit to us here in Holbrook. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have, and I hope you support this agenda item to authorize me to accept the award on behalf of Lieutenant Holbrook and the Fire Department.
Any discussion on the board?
Chief, the matching 7840, we have to come up with that. Now, does that come out of what you already have in your expense budget, or is the town going to have to raise, get that money for you?
So, let me, very good question, actually. It was a topic that came up during conversations earlier this week. I'd like to defer to the town administrator to speak a little more on that, because that was part of the ongoing conversation we had leading up to this evening's meeting, so...
Sure. So, one of, worst-case scenario, the chief said he can cushion it in his budget, he can absorb it. We really don't have a good mechanism here for matching costs. A lot of grants require some form of match. So, what I would suggest we do is go to town meeting in the fall and request the match fund through the article, through a town meeting article. You don't want to let 100, it's a short price to pay for $154,000. A lot of times, you're going to have matches at a 50%, and you've got to really think about that, whether or not it's something that you can afford to do, which is what we're going to run into, frankly, when we talk about renovating next door. The matches are about 50%. But in this case, it's a 5% match. Didn't know he had the award during the budget process, and now he's, you know, submitting the application, may not get it, right? He might not get the award. It's not a definite...
No, this is...
This is, you've already...
Yeah, so, let me follow up. So, this, in probably a meeting that took place in the fall, during one of my reports, I had reported to the Board that I would be submitting this when the open enrollment period comes out. And they move around a little bit based on the federal government's timetable, so we historically always just apply for these, apply for these Assistance to Firefighters grants. Sometimes we, sometimes we get our award, and sometimes we're not. We can certainly decline, but as the town administrator pointed out, with a 5% to 95% match, it really is a great benefit to the town for a very small cost. So, this, this application was submitted proactively in January, and it's gone through the process, so this is, this is a, this award is at the point now where the clock is ticking for us to either accept or decline, which is why I am before you tonight.
Is there a time limitation?
To accept or decline? Yes. I believe it's 30 days, and then...
Do we have to come up with the money in 30 days? Do we have to come up with the money, or just hoping that it's approved?
The, we don't, as the chief said, he can absorb it in his budget if he needs to. I just don't think that's a good practice. I think, I think we're better off going to town meeting and going through the process and having an article to fund the match for this grant.
I agree with that, but I don't want to jeopardize it.
No, we won't jeopardize it. If it fails, or if we opt not to go that route, then he's going to absorb it in his budget, and he'll survive.
Do you have any limitation as to when you have to pay the money back?
So, the period of performance for this particular grant is one year, so when they, I believe it was last Friday, we received our official notification that the process included...
30 days.
Right, exactly. So, we have 30 days, we have 30 days to accept or refuse, and then we have a year to actually execute all the components.
But you're committing to the cost share at the time of the award. That's why it's important to acknowledge the fact that the chief is going to absorb this in his budget, if need be.
Now, how are self-contained breathing apparatuses and cardiac compression devices? How?
So, cardiac compression devices are fairly new technology. We had a loaner last year. We have one in the department inventory. They're very, they're very efficient, and they're used on really the high, only the highest priority calls, so they're an excellent piece of equipment. With regard to the self-contained breathing apparatus, the breathing, the vast majority, 95% or greater of our inventory right now was actually purchased from, I believe it was a 2002 Assistance to Firefighters grant, that is really virtually identical to this one. So, those have now seen two cycles of improvements as referenced by the standards. So, they're really, you know, functionally or technically obsolete, and they've seen at least 15 years of everyday line service as well. So, I mean, we actually are, I think we're right up against in one of the next hydro testing and inspectional cycles. I think we're up actually up against the point where they won't certify the, some of the air bottles anymore, just because of their range. So, this is really, the timing really couldn't be better. The costs, as we just discussed, are really, you know, an excellent benefit for the town, and I'm just thankful that it worked, that it's working out this way, and again, hope we approve the agenda item.
And another option we would have is potentially the capital, because it is 100 and, the total cost is $150,000. So, there's a couple of options. I think the important thing was to acknowledge, a lot of times what happens is time goes by and folks get grants, and it's the end where the town accountant is saying, hey, wait a minute, you've got a cost share here. Well, we're identifying it upfront, there's a cost share, it's $7,000, and we will explore our options in funding that.
Good. Okay.
We should, we shouldn't jump right on it.
Make a motion that we authorize the Fire Chief to accept an award from the Department of Homeland Security on behalf of the Town of Holbrook Fire Department related to a 2015 Assistance to Firefighters grant, AFG application regarding self-contained breathing apparatus and cardiac compression devices. In favor?
Very good, thank you.
Chief. Can we give you some updates on, you might as well stay there, chief, and continue on.
Thank you again. As I know, I've heard a bit from some of the local residents. I know Route 37 is a heavily traveled road, and there's been quite a bit of construction at the AL Prime Gas Station up there regarding their underground fuel storage tanks. Those were removed. The company does have a permit from the Fire Department, and just during some of the removal of the tanks, piping, and associated equipment, routine soil inspection and testing found a sample that exceeded some of the levels that are established by the DEP, so we're on top of it. I've been in contact with the Department of Public, Department of Environmental Protection a number of times over the past weeks. It's being remediated, as notice of release has been filed with DEP, and there's an action plan that's in place, and much of the remediation is already either underway or completed, so I just wanted to report to the Board on that. Our injured member has a consult with a surgeon, hoping for a return to duty. His evaluation's on the 27th, so hopefully I'll be back at the next update with a report that he's back on duty. Was down north Attleboro Tuesday with the fire engine representative, measuring out the remaining compartment fabrications that will be hopefully completed by the shop next week after the radio equipment is installed in the new engine. Also be working with the fire lieutenants over the upcoming days to get a plan together for the mounting of some of the specific equipment that's going to be carried on the trucks, such as hydrant valves, jaws of life, where they'll be located, how they'll be mounted, axes, things of that nature. And then we're going to hopefully wrap up some minor cab modifications and get the lettering and striping applied and get it here to town. And right before the meeting began, I got some, some good news relative to the Social Hospital, who has requested one of our, a couple of our members to present a case review of a call that the department responded to approximately a week ago that involved an industrial accident resulting in a severe upper extremity injury. As I understand it, the Social Hospital surgeon was extremely impressed with the care and the swift action of the firefighter paramedics that were on duty during this call, and he reached out to our personnel to present and discuss it at hospital rounds tomorrow morning. So, that's a little Attleboro from Social Hospital on the patient care that was rendered here in town during a pretty serious medical emergency. That's my report for this evening. If anyone has any questions, they'd be happy to answer them.
Chief, when the underground storage tanks were taken out, is there anyone, who oversees that when they're coming out? Is there personnel from the town, or is this the state?
So, this, the process changed and has been undergoing some regulatory changes over the past year to two years. Most of the enforcement now comes under the Department of Environmental Protection, and so there's a licensure level called a licensed site professional that is typically hired by the company that owns the tanks to do all the stuff that we just reported on, such as soil measurements, remediation actions, and, you know, like any expert in their field, they, you know, have a wealth of knowledge on how to properly measure these things, what to do with things if they're fine, what the action those are, what the reporting...
Sort of like an engineer on a road job or something?
Excellent analogy, very, almost identical, really. So, you know, we certainly continue as a fire department to permit the gasoline, which is a flammable liquid, diesel, which is a combustible liquid, so we're still involved in the process, but much of, much of the oversight enforcement regulatorily has been transferred to the Department of Environmental Protection.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Chief Smith?
We had our blood drive on Sunday, Dana Farber. It was a huge success, exceeded their goals. We had 28 people donate blood. We don't expect, and they only could do four an hour, but they managed to squeeze them all in. They have pictures posted on their website if you want to see. They put sunglasses on K-9 Charlie when he was out there, but it was a good day for all. Secondly, I want to thank all the citizens in the town for all the food and other items they dropped off after the recent tragedy in Dallas. People have been very, every day dropping stuff off. It was amazing. The guys are very grateful for the support during these tragic times. The two new recruits are all signed up for the next available academy. Fortunately, we didn't make Randolph, Hattaway, Reading, which is September 12th. Randolph was all full. They completed everything. They had their psychological exam on July 6th. Just waiting with the results on that. As soon as we get the results, we'll be all set to go. I met with the school department and the school committee. We had interviews, and we chose a school resource officer. It's going to be Detective Scott Glover. He was unanimous pick. Scott's been on the department since 2004. Does a great job. He's going to start, the school starts 29th. He's going to spend time in all three schools every day, and hopefully we'll have all the kinks worked up before the new school opens next year. I think it's a great thing. He's going to be a great asset to the school.
Chief, I had a couple residents contact me about, down on Union Street, there's a house down there that's, a lot of problems with... a house down there that's a lot of problems with drug activity. And I think Inspection Services actually has them in court right now.
Rest of the law are, because you fill the show in court.
Okay, yeah. I just... They were just... Yeah, so they... Couple residents contacted me, and I actually went there. They were upset just that it seems like it's been going on and on. But they are aware of the fact that Attleboy has had them in court. And I think it seems to be working its way through the court. Do you know anything about it, or...
Justice is slow.
Yeah.
It takes its time, but we got to wait. I gave one neighbor an option, getting an arrest order. We gave him all the paperwork to go into court. I'm not sure if he did or not yet, but that'd be the route to go. But I mean, every time we go down there, if we can make an arrest, we'll make an arrest. But we do what we do. He keeps bringing people in there from all over the place.
I know. It's crazy.
It's just crazy.
Thank you.
It's a big problem.
What's your say?
Thanks.
Communications Director.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Reported on the Communication Center. The month of July has started off as a very busy month for the Communication Center. We've had several multiple alarm fires. And when I talk about the Communication Center, I don't necessarily mean over the community... The other communities we serve. We serve... We've had several multiple alarm fires and serious hazardous materials incidents going on. But there's one incident that I want to specifically speak about that occurred in Sharon on July 4th, the night of July 4th, 1:30 in the morning. The Communication Center received several 911 calls reporting people screaming from a lake in Sharon. And we were able to determine the proper location, send the response by the department police out there, and the necessary resources. And there were six people that were in the lake from an overturned boat that were stranded in the lake. So if you can think about... This is very difficult from the telecommunications perspective to... In the middle of the night, 1:30 in the morning, you get a call from residents who can hear people screaming to try to determine where those people are. But that call went very smooth, and I just want to publicly commend the two dispatchers that worked that night. Dispatcher Anderson, Scott Anderson, and dispatcher Nancy Mosier, who did a great job, fantastic job on making sure the location, the correct location was determined, and the proper resources got to these people. And everybody was rescued. Everybody had minor injuries, but it could have been a lot, a lot worse. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Good, sir.
Thank you.
Hope you have a quiet summer after July.
Good evening. I don't know if you've noticed, but we did a lot of work up at Castle Canyon. Placed all the wood on the five benches that are used in the park area. Power washed the gazebo, painted the iron rod railings, put all new playground chips in the area also, so it looks pretty spiffy. Put up no smoking signs at either entrance as you enter into that Castle Canyon area. So that was one thing there we did. Also, the water main project for Laurel Park will be starting on July 25th. And what I will do is next week, go out to the area and give a notice to the people and know that the construction will be starting on that date. Also, we have the summer help kids. We're paying some fire hydrants and doing some brush... Need a brush work around town. Also, I'm waiting on a payment schedule for the water jobs that we did last year in the sewer project on 139. We're looking towards maybe the third week in August to get all this paid. Depends on... Tell me how we can see the contract. That's what we're looking at right now.
Thank you. The park does look great.
Nice situation. I'll update you as well.
Thank you.
Any questions? Beth, can I come up to you if you would?
It's been a busy couple of weeks. Let me count on this. With year-end, this week, with July 15th, was our last one for FY16 to get any and all bills paid unless they're encumbered. So that went and closed today, and I think you actually have it to sign tonight. So now all the fun begins. As far as other things to report, the big thing right now is that Tim, myself, Paul, and Trish, the school business manager, met with Softwrite, the new software company we're hoping to go with for the whole conversion process this week. And I think we had a really good meeting. We're all really excited to get going with it. We're just waiting on their final proposal. There are some benefits to us where the school already has Softwrite. There are some licenses we can actually kind of piggyback upon and don't have to pay that fee again. So he's revamping some things to get back to us. Once we get that, we can move forward, get a timeline ready, and really get going. It's gonna be a big undertaking, especially for Trish and I, because we're gonna combine our entire ledger. And right now, they are completely separate, as you know, and also very different. So that'll be a challenge, but we're both on board with it and looking forward to having one integrated system at the very end. And the DOR actually is going to be coming out, I think, sometime in late August to sit with the finance team and really kind of walk us through the recap and just make sure that we have all of our Ts crossed and dotted. They've been pretty good throughout this whole process as far as being a support system. So, thank you for that. Any questions?
Those were the first couple of weeks.
A little crazy.
Good. Excellent. And you're still here.
Yeah.
That's a good thing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Paul?
As you know, you're all got your real estate tax bills, so all the bills out. Now, the commitment for motor vehicles is going out on Friday. The trash bills went out early, and actually, a lot of people came in and paid them early, too. So collections look like they're running pretty good right now. I'm just in the process now. I printed out. I'm reviewing. I'm gonna put the demands out on all the late real estate taxes for 2016. Soon as I go through the list, cut out those that, you know, we have unknown properties. You gotta make sure. There's no sense mailing those out. It's just gonna come back and cost us more postage. So as soon as I go through the list, those should be ready to go out within a week, so... And as Beth just said, we're working on year-end figures updating... Not updating, but closing our accounts out and getting everything straightened out.
Thank you, Paul. You.
Updates. Is there any concerns?
Good, Brian McCauley. Proud to serve as the president of the Holbrook Firefighters Union Local 1452. Just a friendly reminder to yourselves and members of the town. Our second annual MDA car show is coming up on the 24th of July. The plans are going great. We sat down with our MDA representative this week. The plan's looking great. So last year, we raised over $5,000 to send children and families who suffer from muscle disease to summer camp. And we're setting our goal a little bit higher at $7,500 this year. If you remember, when we used to do the boot drive, we were barely making $1,000. So we're making a lot of money, and we're sending, you know, some great kids and a great family to MDA summer camp. So we get a lot of cars already signed up. If you know anybody, have them contact us at fundraiser@holbrookfirefighters.org. This is an event not just for car people. It's a community event. We encourage everybody to come, whether you have kids. We have stuff for the kids. We have face painting. We have... You name it, we have. We have a band. We're gonna feed ya. It's gonna be great. So any local businesses that want to be involved, if they want to set up a table to advertise their business, we're open to that. We're open to anything. So whatever we can do to get a couple bucks for our MDA families. So if anybody has any questions, that's it. Thank you for the support of the board, and that's it. Thank you.
Nothing.
Make a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?